Welcome to this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. We appreciate your presence here and we're looking forward to a very productive morning. I will remind everyone, and also tell anyone that's not aware, that very shortly following our regular meeting, we will reconvene, following the adjournment of this regular meeting, we'll reconvene for our work session, which is set for 10:30, but we could run a little bit past that. We'll probably have a very short break in between, five to 10 minutes, and then we'll reopen our work for our work session today, which will be a little bit out of our normal schedule. It'll be before lunch today, so just that's the point of information for everybody. I'd like to recognize Dr. Vicki Carlix, President of Walla State Community College Hansville. She'll be giving our information.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President, fellow members of the Board, Chancellor Baker. It's good to see you all this morning. It's been a very troubling week in both our state and our nation, but as we contemplate Easter Sunday and the meaning of the resurrection, I ask you to bow with me and join me in prayer. Our God would give you thanks for the gifts of talent, ability, and leadership, and for the opportunity to use them for the good of the state of Alabama and its people. We ask you to forgive us for we have failed. We ask you to prepare us for that which you have called us to do. In this holy week, let us remember the greatest example of leadership is Jesus Christ, the Son of Man, who was given to us not to be served, but to serve. Gracious God, you have heard the cries of your suffering people. Open our eyes to see the immensity of your love for us and the wonder of what you have done for us. Give us the courage to be your hands and heart for those who are in pain. Give us the wisdom to speak out for justice and righteousness. Fortify the leadership of this great state and bless those who partake of its bounties. Prepare us for this Easter season and its meaning. May your will be done in us today and always. Amen.
If there's anyone who would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President?
President.
President?
President.
Thank you. Let me say that Governor Ivie called yesterday and wanted to express her support, her interest in the community college system and her respect for the Board of Trustees, and that she would anticipate trying to be here next meeting. She was very complimentary of what you did. All right, Chancellor Baker. The next item on the agenda, item four, is the approval of the agenda for the meeting in March. I'm sorry, approval of the agenda, of course, I'm sorry. Our agenda that you have before us, everybody who's emailed this prior to this meeting has had a chance for review this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis. Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion or changes to the agenda? There being known and moved to vote all those in favor of approving the agenda, submit, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed, the agenda is approved. Item five, approval of minutes of the March 15th meeting. Once again, all the board members have received this, and plans have a chance to review this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes to approve them. Motion by Mr. McInally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes of the March 15th meeting? There being known and moved to vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the March 15th, 2017 meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed, the minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Anyone sign up for public comment. Item seven, action items under American Student Affairs, Adult Education Facilities, Fiscal, Information and Technology, Workforce growth. No action items. Item eight, executive legal and public information. The action items under that. Item nine, personnel committee. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Daniel. I'm pleased to announce that the Personnel Committee and Chancellor Baker have agreed to set up terms and conditions for his contract. And transparency has always been very important to the Board, and therefore I would like to read the Personnel Committee's reports. The Alabama Community College System Personnel Committee, consisting of myself, Blake McInally, and Susan Boyd, were appointed during the February 2017 Board Meeting to provide a recommendation to the Board after Dr. Heinrich submitted his letter of retirement. At last month's meeting, the committee recommended Jimmy Baker as Chancellor, and the Board voted and approved unanimously. The Personnel Committee's next mission was to work on a contract of employment for Mr. Baker. We have arrived at a set of mutually agreeable terms and conditions with Mr. Baker, and I have provided a copy of the contract to the Board for review and approval. These are the primary sections of interest of the contract. The effective date of the contract is April 1st, 2017. The term of the contract is three years. The salary is $288,000 annually. The annual housing allowance was deleted. The automatic renewal of the contract was deleted. An annual evaluation of the Chancellor's performance will be conducted before December 31st with respect to the following metrics. First, the Chancellor's embracement, promotion, and advancement of the vision and mission of the Alabama Community College System. The Chancellor's efforts to secure the necessary capital, legislative appropriations, and other resources for the proper management and operation of the Alabama Community College System. The Chancellor's leadership and direction in building a culture of integrity and excellence throughout the Alabama Community College System. The Chancellor's financial efficiency in managing the budget and appropriated funds in a manner to be a good steward of the state and Alabama Community College System resources. The Chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the Board to develop and implement a fiscally responsible plan for the Alabama Community College System for the purpose of minimizing duplication and increasing the overall efficiency of the entire system. And the final metric, the Chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the Board to implement the elements of Board's approved strategic plans for the Alabama Community College System. As I mentioned, transparency is very important to the Board, therefore the Personnel Committee has attempted to be very transparent in our reports. And I would now like to make a motion to the Board to approve Mr. Jimmy Baker's contract of employment as presented in the copy before you.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Davis, there's been a motion by Mr. Davis to approve the contract that we had before, is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion with the Board? I want to compliment Mr. Davis and the Personnel Committee, the work that you've done on this, and appreciate your due diligence and involvement in that. Chancellor Baker, we're just delighted to have you, and we just thank you for being here for us. Appreciate your leadership and our desire to develop the future. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the contract that's been recommended by Personnel Committee between the system, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Baker, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries your hands. Chancellor, report. First, I can't express my appreciation and compliments that you've placed in me, and I think it's more than just me, I think it's the stand here in this department, because the leadership process is important. I'm going to pledge that we all are going to do everything to live up to the conditions that are supposed to apply in our country. With that, I have several items I would like to add. And Russ, this just kind of came about this morning, although there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of background, but it kind of came to him this morning. So if he would, would you come and read the resolution? And before he reads it, let me explain something to you. This is a resolution that is being proposed, or will be proposed, to be passed by the legislature. I met earlier this morning with the Pro Tem and Chairman of Budget Committee in the Senate and several other members of the legislature. They have asked the Community College System of Sacramento to be the lead entity of education in the state, to move forward and develop in a more rational way to allocate funds across the state. They've been talking about this for about a year at least. They have engaged representation from London to assist in this process. We have met with the group previously, and while it's going to require a lot of work, I would tell you that the resolution that the Board, or the policy that was adopted by the Board some time back, Mr. Banjroy, on evaluation of presidents, is in line with what we're looking at, and what they're looking at. It's somewhat of an evaluation, not just of presidents, but it's an evaluation of the schools, and hopefully a planning of how we can improve. And so, and I feel that it's an honor for us to participate in a lead role on this. Their anticipation, as we work through this, then eventually it will be a demonstration to other aspects of the education in the state, and some things they need to improve. So with that, Russ, I would ask you to read this resolution. Let me make it clear, they have asked, I bring to the Board this resolution, with the understanding that they are open, they're not ready to accept it, they're open for suggestions, maybe improvements, and other comments. We're going to distribute this to the presidents as well, and they're looking for as much good information as they can get back. So, but I think it's important, they won't, they're not wanting to wait another month, they want us to be a part of the group. So with that, Russ.
Thank you, Chancellor, member of the Board. What we have, that the Chancellor mentioned, was the creating the Alabama Community College Advisory Council on Outcome-Based Funding. Whereas there is a need for the development of an outcome-based funding model that aligns the state's investment in the Alabama Community College System with the state's education policy goals and objectives, now therefore, be it resolved by the Legislature of Alabama, both Houses thereof concurring, that the Alabama Community College Advisory Council on Outcome-Based Funding is created. A, the Advisory Council shall be composed of the following members. The Chancellor of the Alabama Community College System, the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System, the Executive Director of the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, one member appointed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives, one member appointed by the President Pro Tem of the Alabama Senate, one member appointed by the Lieutenant Governor. And B, the appointing authorities shall coordinate their appointments to assure the Advisory Council membership is inclusive and reflects the racial, gender, geographic, urban, rural, and economic diversity of the state. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Advisory Council shall be elected at the first meeting by the members of the Advisory Council. The Advisory Council shall develop an outcome-based funding model for the allocation of education trust fund appropriations to publicly supported community and technical colleges in Alabama for institutional operations. The Advisory Council may create ad hoc working groups consisting of persons selected by the Advisory Council for this purpose, to advise and assist the Advisory Council in carrying out its duties. D, the outcome-based funding model developed by the Advisory Council shall be all of the following. Use to align institutional funding with statewide priorities for community and technical college education by encouraging programs and services focused on student success and providing incentives for progress towards statewide goals built around a set of shared principles that are embraced by state-supported community and technical colleges. Two, employ appropriate productivity metrics that are aligned with goals and objectives for community and technical college education attainment in the state. The outcome-based funding model developed by the Advisory Council shall also include metrics that align with any statewide plan for goals subsequently adopted for education entities in the state. In order to provide incentives for progress consistent with the state's educational policy goals and objectives, the funding model shall incorporate metrics considering effectiveness, affordability, and efficiency, including, but not limited to, differences in institutional missions, completion of students' educational goals, progression towards students' completion of programs of study, including degree, certificate, or credential, institutional collaboration that encourages the successful transfer of students, success in serving underrepresented students, production of students graduating with credentials in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and other high-demand fields, any other priorities as determined by the Advisory Council. Upon the request of the Chair, the Secretary of the Senate, and Clerk of the House of Representatives shall provide necessary clerical assistance for the work of the Advisory Council. The Advisory Council shall report its findings, conclusions, and recommendations to the Governor, the Chair of the House Ways and Means Education Committee, and the Chair of the Senate Finance and Taxation Education Committee, not later than January 1st, 2018. Whereupon the Advisory Council shall stand dissolved and discharged of any further duties and liabilities. Each legislative member of the Committee shall be entitled to his or her regular legislative compensation per diem and travel expenses for each day he or she attends a meeting of the Committee in accordance with Amendment 871 of the Constitution of Alabama. These payments shall be made out of any funds appropriated to the by the use of the Legislature.
Thank you, Russ. Again, this is a working document, so they're very serious in getting your input, so that we can eventually have a document that everyone is familiar with. It is not being viewed as a way to be punitive toward colleges, it's a going forward kind of approach. And just to highlight on this, it is, is interesting to me, and I've known this for us for a long time, but right now, the main rule upon the nonsense of education in the state and the division of money is a agreement that was reached by Paul Hubbard and Joe Barnes about the debt revenue. That's probably the most forceful element in the whole country. So, very interesting, moving forward toward funding based on government controls. With that, I also would want to add that I think our date, Lou, can you come all around? I think you've got something you want to say. But beyond that, we have scheduled, that we've been requested by the leadership of the Senate to make a presentation, every segment of education, 10 through 12 and higher ed is going to have to participate, but we've been selected as the lead presenter, and we're scheduled for, I think, the first of May, to make a full presentation of our plan for improving education in the state of Alabama. So, we'll get more information out to you about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Good morning, Board. Chancellor Baker first asked me to give another legislative update. I asked him what he wanted me to talk about, it's not like anything's happened over the last couple of days. So, in all seriousness, without rehashing anything, Monday was certainly a day for the ages of the state of Alabama, and one that hopefully we won't have to relive again for a very, very long time. Of course, we do have the new Governor, Governor Ivie, and as a result of that, a new President of this Board. On more positive news, I do want to report to the Board that last night around 7 o'clock, the Alabama Legislature gave final passage to our body corporate legislation. So, that deal that's been sent to the Governor, and hopefully she will sign that bill, and it will go into law. So, that was a good night, last night, to get that on through the Legislature. With that deal through the Legislature, there's a couple of other issues we're kind of monitoring. I think I mentioned to you all last month that there's a veteran scholarship issue that's out there that has expanded, taken most of higher ed's portion of the education budgets for available new dollars. There is a deal out there that it looks to make some tweaks to that program, so we're hopefully in the future, we don't have an expansion of dollars like we've had this year. We're certainly monitoring that legislation and a couple others. But at this point, really, the main item that's out there that's left is the education budget. You know, we, the budget did pass the suit last week. We did see an increase in that for workforce development, 1.75 million added to the college budget for workforce development, and while that, everything else was level funded, but we were the only higher education entity that got any new dollars. So, that was a positive. So, now the budget moves on to the House. We'll certainly be in contact with Chairman Poe and his committee as that moves forward, and hopefully see that through, and hopefully that will be a positive document when they get done. So, with that, that's really where we're at, and happy to take any questions.
I might add, Bud and I have been working on a project that we're very seriously interested in, trying to coordinate with some of our friends in Washington to strengthen our relationships and our information sources and interest in funding from Washington, DC. I think that we've got to get to Columbia, and we, because good input from our representatives and other friends in DC, and obviously, importantly, this is the organization that needs to stay in the office of the Department. And I just wondered if regulations have been, for, thanks for letting me know. It's simply pricey. Get, get way back in the back now, you know it's mostly up front. There's been a considerable amount of discussion about prison education, along with a lot of discussions in the Legislature about prisons, and how the state is developing, and what it needs to be provided in service of the incarcerated population. And I've kind of tasked, I kind of, I have actually said, you must do this, but Susan has taken on the responsibility of digging into the past, looking at where we are and what we need to do to move forward. So, just a short report.
Right. Good morning, everyone. I think that probably in the next month or so, Mr. Baker will want to have a fuller discussion and report regarding our efforts with correctional ed. So let me just give you the highlights. We've been working in, on two fronts, really internally and externally. As I reported to you at the last work session, we have been undertaking a comprehensive review of what we do with prison or correctional education in the system. We have five institutions that serve the incarcerated. We had completed the review of Ingram State Technical College, and now we've expanded to the other institutions. And I learned just recently, as this morning, that our team that has been on the ground reviewing those, those programs, have some really great best practices to share. Chancellor Baker, I haven't even had a chance to tell you this, but our issue is going to be, how can we expand even more? We've got waiting lists, really good work going on out in the prison capacity, physical capacity has become an issue for us. And then we're working internally as well, and when I say internally, one of the things that this review has revealed to us is that in the past, we have not been as hands-on from the system office in understanding what goes on with our colleges in correctional ed and being as supportive as we can be. So what we are doing is, we are looking at an organizational structure within this agency, to have a point person or point persons who would really be responsible for monitoring and supporting our efforts behind the walls. Externally, we've had several meetings with our partners and stakeholders, and those have been going well. Mr. Baker and I had a meeting with the folks over at Corrections a few weeks ago, and as recently as yesterday, I've received a follow-up phone call for some more intense discussions about how we can be better partners with one another. I've met with the Executive Director of the Sentencing Commission to talk about incentivizing the incarcerated to sign on to our programs. I mean, the thing about it is, we are noticing with the younger group, the millennials who are behind bars, they're not, they're just not as interested in education as the older prisoners are. So, we want to think about ways to get them in. And one of the ways to get them in, or one of the carrots is, if you, if there's a possibility for you to be released earlier, if you take advantage of our adult education programs and our career and technical education programs, and learn a skill so that you are ready for work once you exit the prison, then they're more likely to enroll. So, that's part of our discussions with the Sentencing Commission, that's part of the upcoming discussions we'll have with the Sheriff's Association, with the judges, as well as the DAs, because we need everybody on board with this new kind of approach. And then finally, correctional education is a little bit of a misnomer because it suggests that our efforts are really concentrated behind the wall, but we've been having some really good discussions with the Board of Pardons and Paroles about what happens once these folks are released, because many of them come out without basic skills, without the GED, without any, any opportunity or skills that would allow them to get a good job. Those conversations with the Pardons and Paroles have been extremely fruitful. They are in the middle of a new initiative called Day Reporting Centers for High-Risk Parolees. These are folks who may not have stable home environments, or may not have a skill, or may not even have gotten a GED or a high school diploma. But they've opened offices in Birmingham and Mobile, and our community colleges, Jeff State and Bishop, thank you, Bishop, have responded to the need for education within those facilities. They're going to open a facility in Montgomery later this year, and they really want us to work with them at a system level to support this initiative. Ultimately, they will have sites in Tuscaloosa, Huntsville, and then they will move to a model called Day Reporting Centers Light. But right now, at any given moment, there are about 30,000 individuals in the state of Alabama on parole. Many of them are without really basic job skills, and even though the figure given to me a couple of weeks ago was about 45% of them are employed, many of them are underemployed, again, because they don't have those basic skills. So they're very interested in us working with them, them being able to refer those clients to various programs to get them moving as well. So it's an untapped market, it's an untapped group, and we're very happy to step in and offer assistance. That's really kind of it, in a nutshell. Any questions? Exciting.
Yeah, 30,000 parolees is 6% of the total population, 450,000. You can even prevent half of those people from becoming residents of the state. That's 3% reduction in the total population of prisons. And we only, and we need to reduce it, what, 45% percent is the goal, 40%? I mean, that's, that's a, that's 10% of the percentage that we need to.
It's real.
Yeah.
But we have to be at the table, we have to be good partners. Thank you.
And we only, and we need to reduce it, what, 45% percent of the ball to 40%? I mean, that's, that's a, that's 10% of percentage that we need to...
It's real.
Yeah.
But we have to be at the table. We have to be good partners. Thank you. Uh-huh.
Some months ago, I had given you a report, Art, and Stab, and reported to you an issue about certification of programs. And I just kind of wanted to give you an update where we are in that respect. We're not going to give a full-blown detail, because our, I'm telling you, our traveling salesman's on the run today. Jeff is invited to be the keynote speaker to the National Shipbuilding Association. So I told him, "You better come," because that's important in promoting our system as a whole. But Jason is going to fill in, and he will, a short report on where we stand.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Good morning, members of the Board of Trustees. Just to kind of recap on where this developed, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, the Chancellor Heinrich sent out a request to kind of dive into this certification issue with our colleges. And since that time, and I think this probably developed as a result of what was going on in K-12 with the certifications that they have for their workforce programs, and kind of comparing what K-12 was doing in workforce with what the colleges are doing and trying to align those is really what the effort started out being. And really, since that time, there's been quite a bit of change in the leadership with the Alabama State Department of Education, as well as on our side with, through the Chancellor's office, and really in workforce development. I would say about 80% of our staff are less than a year being employed. So we've got a lot of change in our, in our staffing. So Kristy Vane, who is here with us today, has spent many months working on this project and actually went out and met with all of the colleges individually, met with the presidents, met with their staff, looking and analyzing at the programs that are available at the colleges, as well as what certifications each program might have in addition to the certifications that the student might obtain when leaving those programs. So we have a listing, a detailed listing of those things. Some colleges have lots of certifications, lots of programs that have credentials, and then there's some areas that we need to take a look at and maybe beef those up to some degree. But we really have shifted focus since that time, and we really want to ensure that we're laser-focused on what business and industry wants us to be doing. So we don't want to jump too soon and ask colleges to get certain credentials that may not be important to our business and industry partners. So as a result of that, we've kind of slow rolled this process. In the meantime, Jeff Lynn is wanting to roll out a statewide initiative with a statewide certification that is going to roll out very soon. And I know he's excited to inform you guys of more detail about that. This will be the first of its kind in the United States, and I know he's really excited about that. We are all so excited to roll that out. But in partnership with that, in conjunction with that, we want to take a look at the programs we have, the certifications that we have to offer, and make sure that they're laser-focused on what business and industries want. In addition to that, we want to provide college credit for these certifications. So if someone in business and industry has a certification, they may be able to come to our college and get a certain amount of college credit while they begin their degree process. So we've got a lot of things moving, a lot of moving parts here and things that we're analyzing. But we are committed to this. This is important to our system. And I don't know if you might have any questions regarding the certification process or the programs, et cetera, but it's a big, big undertaking to look at this, especially when you add the component of providing college cred for these industry certifications. It's a big deal to our companies, and we want to make sure that these are stackable, industry-recognized, national certifications. So the IT industry is one that's very easy to provide an example of as stackable. So one might start out and receive a, if you look at the CompTIA certifications, one might start out with an A-plus certification, and then move to a network plus, and then a security plus, et cetera. But we want to be able to provide college credit for each one of those stackable industry certifications. I do believe that in the next 30 to 90 days, that we'll be able to report back and provide additional information as we roll out the statewide initiatives. So Chancellor, I would say more to come in the very near future.
Exciting to hear that. Efficiency, consistency, removing redundancy in certifications for K-12 all the way to critical.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that on the K-12 side, they'll have, that's a pretty good back of, we see the other way of moving on that side.
Sure, too. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Chancellor. Great report. Thank you all that reported to us and had presentations. We appreciate that very much. Our sincerest thanks to Dr. Collins and all the state council for the beautiful Easter egg.
Thanks. Appreciation to your foregoth, your fellow. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is President Branch here or Coastal Alabama? Yeah, that's right. They have a SAGs visit. It's going to be putting their approval on the new institution, Coastal Alabama. But it drops my attention that the National Council of Marketing and Public Relations, which is also an affiliate of the American Association of Community Colleges, they handle out, hand out annually Pay Center Awards. And President Branch received the 2016 Pay Center Award for District 2. And my congratulations to him and the great job that that institution has done and is doing in marketing.
Any comments from the Board before adjournment? The work session will convene probably five minutes or so after we adjourn this. Our next regular meeting is May 10th, here in October, 10:00 AM. Is there a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn? Second. Discussion, all those papers say aye. Stand adjourned.